The baby's standing?
Yeah.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much, we'll get to work.
Takes my seat, now she's throwing him down. I'm gonna move him outside.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of 4:18.
Oh, I got motion.
Third second. By Suzanne? Questions, concerns, observations, changes in the minutes? Jennifer?
I'm pulling it up, hold on. Wasn't quite right. Focused on the baby.
Everybody.
And well you should.
You charge it for that.
If somebody else has something while I'm preparing.
Hank, you had a question, do you want to get some clarity around your one question?
Yeah, I did. Perhaps Stacy can clarify it for me. It's a new term for me. The minutes, over minutes. I believe it's on page two. Relation to AYP, the term educationally disabled.
Special education. That would be our type of student.
Thank you.
Would that be everybody with a 504 or is the group broader than that?
No, that would just be, just special, just students identified as special education. Not, it does not include 504 or anybody else, just special education.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Alright, now I'm ready. On page four, I was hoping to clarify in the technology section. I asked if the parent usage of Power School had gone up, so I'd like to include that particular aspect. And also on page four, there was a question about impact fees, and the question was, is it a design function or a price function? And Stacy said the answer was yes. So, which is it?
Yes.
Are you saying that?
Based on what this says here, I would say it is both.
It's both?
It's a design and a price. And we can add said, stated yes to both.
Oh, okay.
And it's both, would that help clarify it?
That's all I have.
Any other questions, changes, feedback? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor of approving as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? Who is attending? I'll be putting this at 7:01.
We're at 7:09 right now.
Wait, where's Maury?
There wasn't any crowd.
She's sick.
But thank you for that. Maury had touched on me earlier. Has to be excuse. She's not fluent. Alright. Sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once here.
Correspondence. You have just the letter we followed. In the correspondence folder is your substitute report and a follow-up load. That's a letter from Mr. McBride thanking for, from Hannah Firds Health School for a donation of six, $768 to the school.
We'll pass that around. Commendations and good news. Who would like to start?
You can start.
Well, we just came back from vacation and we saw that we all had new computers in the information center, real close and near. And then tomorrow is the student council meeting for all days. And the blood drive is on May 13th, which is coming up. And that's about it, just because we were on vacation.
Is the, is the blood drive school students only, or can the public come in and donate?
The public comes in, yeah.
Okay. And, and what day is that again?
May 13th.
May 13th, from when to when?
I think it starts when school starts and then it goes over until the night, I think, until like 6.
Okay, so, so please come in, roll up your sleeves, be ready to give.
Give blood.
Um, I actually don't have anything today, but I'm just.
Back to vacation.
But it was just, yeah, it's the first day back. The kids were happy to be back, they were ready to work. So, the weather was nice, so, um, that's it, we're just happy to be back and it was a good Monday after vacation.
Well, I have something that covers both Maple Lab and Mountain View. During the school year, both Maple Lab and Mountain View collected books to send to, what's the name of the school? Yeah, Chestnut. And we received a thank you letter, so I was asked if I would read it. It says, "I delivered the last 17 cartons of books from Maple Lab School and Mountain View Middle School to Fittler Academics Plus yesterday. In their library, they have posted the pictures of your student council members. The official opening of the library will be on May 4th, it's going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony, and I'm going to cut the ribbon. I hope there will be a video so that you can all see what children are celebrating. Please understand that they can celebrate because of your generosity and hard work. You truly made this possible. I thank you for caring about people so far away from you. Their lives may be different from yours, but children all deserve quality education, full of wonderful books to read. You have made this possible by sharing your books with them. Fittler Academics Plus is a lottery school. Children are selected to attend it by drawing numbers in a lottery. It's a very good school, and when these students finish eighth grade, they select a high school in Philadelphia and apply to it. I wish all the schools in Philadelphia were as good as this one, so it wouldn't matter where children went to school. Very truly yours, Jessica Tunnell." So, kudos to students at the two schools.
I do have something today. Perhaps you read the Manchester Union Leader yesterday and saw the piece on the woman from Pinkerton who, her students participated in Jump Start Coalition Financial Literacy Test. And she was very proud that she had several students that finished in the top 20% for the US. We had seven, we had 14 students take it here. Eight, no, two, four, sorry, six of them were in the top 20% in the US. And I wanted to recognize and commend those students. From my management class, Patrick Bruska, Emily Ellis, who was also one of the top two at the high school, Adam Fanning, Brian Royce, who was the other one in the top two, Carolyn Bruska, and McCall Bourgeois. So, commendations to them, they did a great job.
Thank you very much.
This was in the Union Leader wraparound thing that comes around the flyers, and it really caught my eye. It's all about the AP Bio and Chem class that led a virtual sweep of the New Hampshire Science and Engineering Exposition at New Hampshire Technical College in Concord. Competing against 20 schools from across the state, Goffstown students won first place prizes in six out of eight disciplines, ranging from mammalian biology to toxicology. They won second place prizes in the competition as well. And these are from Ms. Thomas's group, her AP students. And I just wanted to really, I just think that's awesome that they're competing and doing so well in their, in their studies, in their sciences. The other thing I have is, I'm now sitting on the 250th, Goffstown 250th Celebration Committee, and I have gala tickets for June 25th. The gala is a celebration of Goffstown kind of celebrating itself, and there will be a hypnotist, and there will be dancing, and again, it's June 25th, and tickets are $35 a piece, or until June 1st, if you're interested in purchasing a table, it's $250 for a table of eight until June 1st. Otherwise, the tickets are $35 after that. So, please see me, or I will see you.
Thank you. Any other commendations or good news? Jenny?
Along the same lines, I think that the daffodils that they planted around town in commemoration of the 250th anniversary look awesome. They really perk up the town a lot. And the other thing is, I don't know whether we officially at this meeting spoke about George DeRosa with the Music Educator Award of the Year, but I read it that on my way inside the door tonight, and just wanted to say, awesome job.
Always surprised.
He was, yeah.
I think we talked about it at the last board meeting.
Okay, okay.
Any other commendations or good news?
Sounds good to repeat again.
Absolutely. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Admin Finance?
Admin Finance. I would like to move the manifest for $1,323,169.43.
Do I have a second?
Thank you. The highlights are, the major items are payroll was $491,483. Taxes were $152,537. And benefits were $449,706. In the Special Ed Department, we have the provider, which is the bus company, $53,094. The provider for monitors on the bus, $3,353. And pyramid education services, $8,248. In general expenses, Honeywell was $11,229. Icon, $7,607. And PSNH, $11,354. And that's the total of the major expenses. I have nothing else because Mr.
The money man is good at speed.
Yet to vote, are there any questions, concerns about the manifest? All in favor of approving the manifest as motion? Opposed? Abstentions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Start with that.
Anything else, Hank?
No, that's it.
Okay. Wait, will we do CIP separately?
We will.
Human Resources? The next meeting is May 9th at 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, at the SAU Central Office. Planning and Communications?
We met tonight, continued on, just determining future columns, content. We talked about changing the format of the newspaper column for maybe like the next one, next two, and then bring it back to the board to see if you like that better. More of a summary of what the board's been doing, like we'll take what happens at this meeting and summarize it. It should be submitted next Monday for the following Thursday, and see what you guys think of that. During the summer, we'll still need to run things, like we have the article, "The Role of the Principal" right now, and some different ones, but for now, see if you can try a different format and maybe address like what's going on in the schools, you know? The good news too. Talked about the Board Retreat, which is coming up, and then our next meeting will be in June. I don't know, I don't have the date, it's first Monday in June.
We need to schedule that. CNE meets again on May 9th?
May 9th, at 7:00 PM at the SAU. And I believe all of the principals will be attending that meeting, giving a synopsis of the year, so it's a meeting that if anyone is interested, it's a very informative meeting for 10. And I believe at our last, my last report, I failed to mention that the administrators in the town of Goffstown all chose to voluntarily give up their raises this year, and I think people should know that that was done, and to try to make sure that we could provide better education for the kids this year, they all gave up something of their own. And I thought, I think they should be commended, and I think, you know, in a public format, that we should say thank you and make sure people realize, because the administrators are always getting criticized for something, and I think, you know, we need to give them a pat on the back once in a while for something really over and above that they chose to do on their own, so, kudos.
And for the sake of framing that up a little bit, in much the same way as the collective bargaining units in our schools, GESS and GEA have contracts, we also have contracts with our administrators. And the school board, through those contracts, has made promises. What the administrative staff chose to do, without ever being asked, was to allow the board and the district to escape some of the promises that it made well prior to this year. And so, we are grateful for that, and know full well that, to the extent that that means there are more resources available in the pot, that they'll be used in supporting our collectiveness, which is advancing student learning. Thank you to all of the administrators. Oh, so that you know, I would encourage everybody to, who is able to, to attend the next CNE meeting, the administrators' charge in the past, and presumably this year, will be to look at, when they do their presentations at the next CNE, look at what your goals were at the beginning of the year, what you were able to accomplish, what's left on the table, and where you're going. So, to the extent that you're going to hear from the administrators, that is the context in which their presentation should be made. So, I would encourage you to attend if you are able, it's always informative, it's a great place for you to be able to sit and have a dialogue and have some time for Q and A. Elementary facilities renovation. Anything new?
The committee meets on Thursday. Just so the board does know, the selectmen did approve us using, getting the impact fees, so that has been released. So, that's all set, the additional impact fees you approved at the last meeting. Can I go right into superintendent's room?
Please.
Okay, just some quick things, because we had vacation last week. We're moving into science kneecap testing next week, starting that, so that will be selected grades, like it's 4, 8, and 10 who are doing, 4, 8, and 11 who are doing kneecap science testing. Let's see, I'm sending out next week nominations for school board for teacher rep, so all three teacher reps, if anybody's watching and is interested as a teacher and applying, that information will go out to the all-day Goffstown, so everybody will get that information. We have fingerprinting at the SAU this Wednesday from 9:00 to 12:00, so if there's anything that needs to be fingerprinted still out there, 9:00 to 12:00, not all day, 9:00 to 12:00 at the SAU office, you don't need an appointment. I did receive information today from the planning board from the town of Goffstown, and I'm going to try to get to this hearing, I have another meeting that night, but I'm going to try to go from one to the other. They are looking to demolish the Burger King and put in a new building that will house a Family Dollar store. In general, a problem with a Family Dollar store, I am concerned about the construction of tearing down a building and building a new building with our school across the street and the noise impact that will have. So, I'm going to try to get to that hearing, if I can't get there, I will have Brian or MC go to at least let them know of our concern about when that construction happens, the noise involved in it, that our school is just across the street, and there will be, that will have a significant impact on it. So, I did want to let the board know that that is the plan at this moment.
When they built where the little strip mall is next door, I mean, people were getting motion sick in their parking.
Yeah.
Because they had, they were pylons going into the ground. I mean, it was awful. It was awful.
And my guess is, is that there may be an element of carving up the street in addition, which obviously is not going to work during the school year.
Right, right.
Not, not without significant.
Not after what we dealt with this summer, with the construction just in the basic road.
Doing a good job carrying it up right now.
Yeah, yeah. So, I will keep the board apprised of where that goes, but I did, I just got that today in the mail, so. We did receive the one-day waiver that I applied for through the state for the high school seniors, so we're all set with that. And I wanted to just share a letter that I received from NEASNC, that's the accreditation organization on the high school. We had to send in our progress report, and I just want to, they reviewed our special progress report, and we, they're continuing the school's accreditation, and they were pleased to commend the following, and so I just want to read some of the things that they spoke about. They're commending us on the steps we've taken to address the use of local assessment plans, including a review and revision of the school-wide writing rubrics by teachers, the revision of the local common writing assessments to improve alignment to the state writing frameworks, the inclusion of on-demand writing prompts and critical reading tasks, the revision of common assessments to all genres of writing outlined in the state writing frameworks. That's been a huge focus for us, is trying to get writing across the curriculum, that writing just doesn't happen in English class, it also happens in science and social studies. So, it was nice for them to actually notice that we are actually, put a big emphasis on that. The collaborative examination of student writing on grade-level teams, the consistent use by science teachers of assessments which address inquiry and problem-solving through common labs, and with the use of school-wide problem-solving rubrics, the steps taken to minimize the impact of budget cuts on teaching and learning, and the steps taken to revise the traditional study hall into a purposeful learning and support period through the use of sustained silent reading. They were also pleased to learn of the student successes on our kneecap in reading, writing, and math. And I will just point out along with this, they also sent us a notice of the need to inform them immediately within 60 days of any substantive change in any of our changes. So, I just, again, want to read these, because these are all things that have impacts that we will have to address with them as we make budget cuts and as we look at things. Any elimination of fine arts, practical arts, and student activities, diminished upkeep and maintenance of facilities, significantly decreased funding, cuts in the level of administrative and supervisory staffing, cuts in the number of teachers and/or guidance counselors, grade level responsibilities of the principal, that would mean if a principal was also teaching, cuts in the number of support staff, decreases in student services, cuts in the educational media staffing, increases in student enrollment that cannot be accommodated, takeover by the state, inordinate user fees, and changes in student populations that warrant program or staffing modifications that cannot be accommodated, such as the number of special needs students, vocational students, or students with limited English proficiency. And so, as we move forward, I see a lot of impact on a lot of those areas, and so, both at the middle school and high school, we'll need to really closely look at what we have to report, down to even when I think about the vocational piece at the high school level, if the state cuts that vocational reimbursement funding, we then have to pick up those costs, which means either we're sending less kids to the vocational program. I'm actually meeting with MST next week to talk about what that looks like, what they're planning to do if the state reduces funding, because they're then anticipating less students going to MST, which means they're likely going to cut some programs. So, again, the bulk, you know, it's like a chain impact, so it just continues to go downhill. So, I did want to share that with you. I also did want to share that Mountain View under NEASNC was listed in their, on their website, under one of seven schools that were selected, listed under promising practices, and that was listed for their safety plan, and the work that the middle school did on the safety, the SAU-wide safety plan that actually was housed at the middle school and who created that, as well as their offerings of Algebra I and Algebra II. And so, they were commended and noted as a promising practice to school for those types of things, so I did want to point that out.
Just, I just want to clarify something. We run vocational programs at two locations, right? Both Alverne and MST?
Correct, correct.
And, and both of those are potentially affected?
Absolutely, yeah. MST more so, we have, I think we have five or six students who go to Alverne, because they have just different programs there. But we send at least 100 students to MST during the day. I think that's all I have.
I just want to say, since we're on TV, that during budget season, when we were talking about being concerned about our accreditation, that that's exactly what we were talking about, those things that they brought up that we have to watch, and we have to make sure that we're doing what the accreditation team feels that we need to do in all those areas, where we can't just go willy-nilly through the budget and cut things out, and to whatever we decide, or whatever the budget committee, that still has to go to the NEASNC, and they will be aware of accreditation ongoing.
Absolutely.
I think that's important for people that are listening to know that all of those things that you just listed really do have a huge impact.
Yeah, and I can give you an example, when we cut the administrator from the high school, we had to send them a report of how we were meeting what that administrator did, who's owning those responsibilities, has, and every year, we have to have, we have to do a follow-up report, anytime there's a substantive change, and demonstrate how we're continuing to meet that need, if it's impacting student learning, and how are we going, how are we working towards getting that back? Because we were accredited at a specific level, and so their concept is that that level will maintain, and so if you cut, their goal is always, well, how are you bringing it back? What are you doing differently? So, it is an ongoing process.
Under Old Business, Technology Plan Approval.
The board asked for this to come back to this meeting to review it, so I'm bringing it back for approval.
Are there any questions about the plan as it has been presented? I understand that it goes on for the better part of 30 pages. It makes for wonderful reading, because it really does go soup to nuts. Here's the plan, here are the goals, here's how we're using technology, here's the budget piece. It offers vision and philosophy statements. I think that it probably touched on most of the things a reader would like to see in a plan. Most importantly, I want to get to the numbers piece. As you look at the budget element of the plan as it's presented, from 2011 to 2015, and look at the dollars per year, and feel free to correct me if I'm misreading this, it is flat.
Correct.
Part of that is because some of the pieces of the hardware, for instance, are contracted, and these are leases that occur over time, and it has allowed us as a board to fix that expense, understand what that expense is, and actually to negotiate very favorable rates on the rental of the equipment. Are there any questions before us now, any concerns or observations about the plan that's been presented? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the plan as presented. Suzanne, seconded by Jenny. All in favor of approving the plan as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Gary will be very happy if he works hard on that.
He did work hard on it. I would, by the way, I would encourage anybody who has questions about technology, as members of the public, the selectmen, the budget committee, this is the best place to start. Where might they find it if they wanted to read it and didn't want to ask us for a copy?
They could find it by emailing me.
Okay. Terrific.
And I will send them our electronic version.
Do you want to put that, do you want to put this somewhere on our website?
We could.
We can do that.
Stress page 21.
Excuse me?
Stress page 21 when you put it on the website.
That's the one you just alluded to. Okay.
We'll put it up as, it needs to get DOE approval. We can put it up as a draft until we get DOE approval, but we'll, I'm sure Gary would be more than proud to put it up there as a link.
He, he did a great job, and it really does do soup to nuts. Suzanne? Suzanne?
Yeah, it's not on your old business, but it's on mine. Has Mr. Beloletto's day at the high school been approved yet?
I think I actually just emailed the high school to find out when it was. I believe it was happening at some point this week, I just haven't gotten confirmation from them, but I think their plan was to schedule it this week.
It was approved, the question is the date and scheduling, and I know that Mr. Beloletto did it.
And please ask him to make sure he gets into a room where there's a smart board.
Yes, we will.
He needs to see that in action.
I believe the high school was setting him up with all of his requests, which was to send technology and...
Will this tour be escorted?
Yes. Yeah, it's not a free, we don't allow anybody in our schools just have their free run, so yes, it will be supervised from place to place and be well-directed.
And he will realize that, that he won't be able to write articles about specific students in the paper.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with him about confidentiality and, yeah, I mean, there were certain things he has to watch that we can't let him see because of perfect issues, so.
But I'm just hoping that stress, because...
New business. We need to get the board's signature on the GESS agreement.
I have those, so I would ask Philip and Keith to sign them in the duly noted spot. One is for the board chair, and since Philip's now the board chair, it's the board chair and the head of the negotiating team, which right now is Philip for both of them, so you can figure out if Keith wants to sign as chair and you as chair, that's who was doing it at the time, whichever way.
Can anybody be a witness, or does it need to be a...
I can be a witness, I'll be a witness. There's two of them. Sorry, yeah.
Mr. LeBordeaux, the CIP matrix review?
Hey, everybody has a copy of the matrix, we'll run through it. It's that time of the year again, capital improvement program projects that we are presenting to the board this evening for your review, and we'll ask for your final direction no later than your May 16th meeting, what it is you want us to bring forward to the CIP committee. The school district is scheduled to present to them in early June. Format is the same as previous years. Would I, I can review each line with you individually, or just address the highlights? Is there a preference?
And if I can add a preempt to this, is that at your board retreat, some of these will be discussed as far as when we, when does the board really, so there's, there's larger projects, the Bartlett and the Maple Ave renovation, the track, the theater, those pieces to the puzzle are on the agenda for the board to have a conversation about when we really are going to go forward with this. Is it next year, is it the year after, how we do that? Are they single, is it a single bond, is it different warrant articles? And so that will happen before your next meeting, so you will have an opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation on some of those bigger items before you have to make a decision, just so you have that, that might be helpful.
Okay, for the benefit of some of our newer members, why don't we run through each of the eight line items individually. Under Bartlett, line 243, building performance upgrades. We probably all recall talking about Honey, the Honeywell Energy Management Program over the last six years now. What we're showing here are the last four years of payout on that particular project, for which we are receiving building aid from the state. You might recall the original program retrofitted all of the lighting in our schools, added oil preheaters, paddle fans, other energy management devices. And the Bartlett portion represents the work that was done down there, so again, no new news in that particular line. Bartlett Phase II renovations, Stacy alluded to that a moment ago. This is the Bartlett piece of the elementary facilities review study that's underway at this particular point in time. The dollar number that we've chosen to use here is a, an estimate that was provided by one of the contractors that we have done business with in the past, it's $4.2 million. Represents forward pricing for a project scope that we had envisioned at that particular point in time. That number obviously is subject to change and will be dependent upon whatever deal the board establishes with a selected architectural firm and construction company as we go forward. Timing on this is set for 2013, or the 2012-2013 school year. The assumption that we made was that the bond proposal would be presented to district voters in March of 2012, and if approved, the project would start the following school year, the 2012-2013 school year.
Ray, I'm concerned that this is going to be looked at at CIP, and they're not going to get us in the right year. That's what happened this past CIP, so you need to have a conversation with Brian over at town hall, just where he wants us to put our numbers, because this looks to me like it's in the other year.
So Ray, can we put, I'm just wondering, two at the top, where it says like 2013, can we put underneath that 2013/2014 school year, so that we all know exactly what years?
Why is there going to be a whole year in between?
Well, no. What will happen is, is a bond will go before the voters in March of votes filed. The monies to fund the project will be for September, the school year that starts in September, well, actually July 1.
Right, okay.
But it's treated as though the construction begins in 13.
That's right.
So, I mean, maybe, maybe the thing to do is do something parenthetically above the years to indicate the school year.
Okay. We will have the discussion of...
Put the date July 1st, 2012, or 2015. I'm telling you, it's very, dealing with the town, it's on a calendar year, and then you can flip over to this thing, it's...
And what we've tried to do here is to line these projects to the town's fiscal calendar, which ran from January 1st to December 31st.
You're assuming that everybody understands that.
I will definitely have the conversation after seeing what happened last year.
Yeah, exactly.
But in the, in any event, that's what the thinking is, and what we would be asking the board to do is to determine the dates that you see likely, and we can reschedule based upon that input. Okay, moving down to line 247, this is a project that has been on the matrix for a bit, this is the replacement of the boiler in that facility, of which will be about 25 years of age in 2014. A new project this year is on line 248, and that's the replacement of the oil tank at Maple Avenue. It too is going to be 25 years old at that particular point, and we are recommending replacement of that tank, given what happened here at the high school with a similar vintage tank a couple of years ago.
Are there any gas lines anywhere near Maple Ave?
No, there aren't, unfortunately.
I think the library's close to the site, I think, I think, kept in front of the library going around, is it?
That's something we should look at when we get into the project.
Natural gas?
Yeah, I thought it went down in front of the town hall, down towards the...
At least gives us enough.
But I don't think it goes anywhere, it's down on the street.
The only school that we could take advantage of was Bart, was Bartlett, and it's an extremely economical alternative here for, for heating buildings. So the line 249, again, is an old project, and that had with, had to do with re-roofing segment of the building, about 15,000 square feet of new roofing. Lines 247, 248, and 249, if we do get the go-ahead with the bond and the renovation project, these three items will become part of the renovation activity. If the bond or the renovation project is not approved and we can't go forward, these are going to stay as standalone activities for items that need to be addressed in that timeframe. And again, we would be looking at the 2013-14 school year, which will certainly identify with the town.
Because invariably, this will be a question from somebody. The value, the placeholder value of the bond in 2013, does that include also the dollars that are allocated to the individual projects?
Yes and no, those are estimated numbers.
No, 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 I understand, I understand that, but, but, so that if those dollars were expended as individual projects, they would reduce work, not necessarily price, but work that needed to be done in the overall project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, line 250 is, again, a best estimate that we have to work with for the renovation work, facilities renovation work at Maple Avenue. That's pegged right now at nine and a half million dollars. Line 251 depicts the debt service that will start in the 2013-14 school year, with the assumption that the bond does happen the year previous, so these will be principal and interest payments. The assumption that we used is a 20-year bond at 5%. Line 252 is again Honeywell, and it's the Maple Avenue portion for the energy management program. Again, we are coming up on the tail end of that 10-year program. Line 255 is the current bond for the work that was done at Maple Avenue and at Mountain View. We will be making our last bond and interest payment in August, this coming August, and that bond will be retired at that time. Line 258, again, is an old project, and it's just moving to the left on the matrix as the schedule comes in closer to real time. This has to do with refurbishment of the Hilltop Gym and Cafeteria over at Mountain View Middle School. Line 257 is the boiler replacement at Mountain View Middle School. Again, 25 years of age, and this is going to be preventive work that we're looking at. Oil tank replacement, same as Maple Avenue, again, due to age. The other comment is, we've already had a cathodic system breakdown of the oil tank system at Mountain View, which we had to execute a repair action on this past summer. So that's usually the first sign that we're definitely on last legs. Line 259 is the resurface of the gym floor. That particular project had to be cut from the 2011-2012 budget, we are pushing it out one year to keep it on the matrix. The same story with line 260, which is to install a sports floor in the Hilltop Cafeteria at Mountain View. What that will allow us to do is to have a second gymnasium. The second page, line 261, is the re-roofing for the entire Mountain View School. We're looking for that to be done in the 2013-14 school year. Lines 262, 263, and 264, this is the Cascade Playground, cross-country trails and softball field improvements at Mountain View Middle School. We are taking off the matrix for this year. Lines 262 and 263, the playground and cross-country trails projects have been addressed again and are now thought to be coming in at a cost lower than the threshold for inclusion on the capital improvement matrix, under $25,000. Softball field improvements, all of that work has been completed and we're pulling it off the matrix because of that. Moving on to Goffstown High School, again, we're looking at putting a sports floor down, much like we are at Mountain View Middle School. This again will be in the cafeteria portion, which will allow more gymnasium use space for this facility. A revised project for this year is line 268, and that's the track and jump facility. We have been bringing that forward year after year as work to be done over at Barnard Park, and it would be the rebuild and resurfacing of the existing track over there. What we're proposing to the board for consideration is to adopt the CAS committee's recommendation to bring and, bring that facility back to the high school site and actually do the construction of the entire track and field system here on-site. The estimated cost for doing that is $2,300,000. If we do go ahead with that recommendation, it would result in another bond proposal for that amount.
Or it has to be inclusive in the remodeling one.
Exactly, it could either be a standalone in conjunction with, or we bundle this cost with the cost for the elementary facilities improvements.
And I think all those are the things that the board needs to really have a conversation about, what that looks like, when that looks like, how that looks.
Ray, I don't recall, in the CAS recommendation, did it call for a, for a, an all-season turf field, all purpose turf field?
Yes.
Thank you, I thought it did, but I wasn't so clear, okay, thank you.
Line 269, again, is the carpet replacement for this particular room. We have moved it out once again to the right, we pushed it out an additional year. The Goffstown High School Theater infrastructure improvement, again, a recommendation from the CAS committee included a total refurbishment, new seats, new lighting, new sound system, and an actual expansion of the auditorium to include a new storage space. What is being put in front of you this evening is a scaled-down version of that project.
This is, yeah, the 250 is just strictly to redo the auditorium, new seating, which if you haven't been in there, the seats are horrible and are, many of them are just sitting on the bolts. So the, one of the conversations that the committee had, as well as the music department and myself and administration, was that we, we're now at two portable, two storage trailers outside for the theater and music departments, and so for the money we pay for those, what would be an additional, smaller storage area that we could add on to the back? There was, there's a slab out there that would be, actually, Bona Page and Sturt came out and looked at it for us and gave us an idea of what you could do with those spaces, and so there's definitely room for building a small addition for storage, as opposed to having storage that's not included in this, this is just a general cost to get, to refurbish just the auditorium.
Any increases seating in that plan?
No. Actually, there, there may be a little less seating because we would, handicap, the theater right now is not handicap, it's not, doesn't meet requirements for handicap accessibility.
Had the committee looked at expanding? Because I thought...
Because I thought-
The committee did. Um, the committee looked at expanding, um, after reviewing it and getting preliminary class-in ideas, um, I think the committee felt that it was well out of reach of what the community would want or would support, um, because it really means gutting that entire section, because you can't just add to the theater because of where the state, it would mean gutting that entire whole area and rebuilding it, which was a huge cost.
Too much money.
Um, so, they tried to figure out what was, um, a way to meet the community needs and the schools' needs to have a, a nice theater with good seating and lighting and sound system, but also-
An electrical panel, it's not going to kill anybody.
Right, but also work to address the handicap accessibility and to find storage space. Um, that has been one of the things the fire department has been on us about is storage space. We can't use the hallways anymore, um, and so we have now two portable trailers outside that house all of the stuff for the theater department.
Is there access either now, or could there easily be access to the area where the pad exists?
Yes, it's actually right off of the music chorus room.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually right there, there's a pad right there that you could build a room off of. Um, that is not included in this cost.
We got a portable on it that collapsed.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
From age and- Well, yeah, that thing was-
And that's, and that's where we got the first storage trailer, was when that collapsed. And then when we bought all the stuff in, the fire department said we can't have it in the building, so thus we got the second storage trailer.
That's an awful lot of valuable equipment to be locked out in a, um, a storage thing.
Yeah.
But it is locked and secured.
Okay. Um, the, again, the theater project is estimated at a quarter of a million dollars. It would be bundled with the track, uh, costs and that project would result in about a two-and-a-half million dollar, uh, funding requirement, single bond, or again, in conjunction with the, um, the thirteen million dollars in financing required for the elementary projects.
Ray, I realize that this may sound silly to almost everybody at the table, but in terms of, um, doing something to that facility, it seems to me that, that storage is sort of important. And if we're going to think about bonding something, we ought to at least be able to consider sort of what the cost of doing something with the pad area is, as long as it's doable. Is there any way to at least get some information around that before we have our retreat?
We'll work on that.
Okay. I mean, at least some sort of-
Some idea.
So, so we have a decision matrix that we can work off?
Sure.
If, if it's the interest of the board to talk about doing that as a piece of something?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll see what we can, DPS maybe will take your hand on that.
Sure. Okay, um, line 272, again, if we do go ahead with bond financing for, uh, the track and the theater, uh, this number set represents the debt servicing, which would begin in the 2013-14 school year and continue on for the next twenty years. Again, our assumption was a twenty-year bond at five percent. What's different about this one is building aid, and the same goes with the elementary facilities. Um, we'll get to that in a moment.
Excuse me? Two seventy-one, what was it?
Two seventy-one, I'm sorry. Uh, improving, uh, parking and traffic areas here at the high school. One of the thoughts was to add to the efficiency for entrance and ingress here at the high school, and one of the thought processes were to expand the road in the back of the facility here to a two-lane setup to allow for a more enhanced traffic flow on Mast Road in the morning. Uh, they figure if we do add, town, the town folks project that if we do move to an entrance in the rear of this building to bring all of the students in, they could eliminate anywhere from sixty to eighty cars on Mast Road in the way of backup in Wallace Road each morning, uh, at any given point in time. It would run more cars up Wallace Road for entry into, uh, into the school area. Uh, we're also talking long-term here about the track and field installation. Uh, monies here would, uh, could also go to, uh, enhance our parking capabilities for those kinds of events, as well as, um, the sporting events at the football field and baseball fields in the back of the building here.
I'd also add, there's a lot of safety concerns that Frank and Kim and I have had here at the high school with the flow of traffic and student walking. Um, if you've ever been here in the afternoon when the students get out of school in the back lot, they come down the main way where the students are walking up. So, it's cars coming this way, it's buses and cars coming this way, coming, because the, the pattern is they come through the parking lot where the teachers park, come around the building, including the buses, and go out the back way. Well, you also have students coming down the hill from their parking lot, you have students walking across the street, and so if you've ever been in the back at about two forty-five, three o'clock, um, it's a really safety hazard. So one of the things we've talked about doing is making it a two-way for student access, for all students, instead of coming through the teacher's parking lot and going around the building to the back, all students would enter and exit through the back of the school. Instead of having that center where, where cars come in and out now into that parking lot would become a walkway, we would open up two entrances, one on the one side and one on the other side, um, for student access. So students would actually be able to come into the parking lot through the back and then make a immediate right and go into the parking lot. And so that center where the kids walk would then become a walking route, so it would be safer. So, um, that's kind of the layout of what we've talked about doing.
Okay, um, line 273 again is the debt service schedule for the refund bond that you folks enacted in November. Again, um, the highlight there is the savings over the last ten years of that, uh, bond to the tune of about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We're beginning to reflect that now on the reduced numbers for the debt servicing from now through 2021. Line 280, uh, technology infrastructure improvements for Maple Avenue and Bartlett up until this year. It was a standalone project. It too now is going to become part of the total, um, elementary project. And what this includes is going to be the installation of the technology infrastructure in the new classroom space that's going to be constructed at each of those schools, along with additional equipment. Uh, line 281, the capital reserve fund deposit for Bartlett, we're projecting another six hundred thousand dollars. And this is, again, is the board's decision whether or not you want to bring that forward.
Give me three hundred thousand?
Three hundred thousand being proposed for 2012 and three hundred thousand for the twelve and thirteen school year. The benefit again is, uh, this capital reserve can be used, it will be used to reduce the debt load for the renovation project when we get going. It's a savings account that's being generated. Currently, there's three hundred thousand dollars in change in the, in the Bartlett Capital Reserve Fund.
And the three hundred thousand dollars and change, the and change part comes from interest?
From interest.
And, and to the extent that that three hundred dollars has great utilities in reducing the debt service that you would pay on that three hundred over a twenty-year period?
It sure would. Line 282 is a previously scheduled replacement for the district's pickup truck. What we're looking at, uh, doing is to push it out one additional year. It was being scheduled for the 2013, the truck would be ten years old at that point. It's now being pushed out one year to the right. The last page, um, I don't know that we need to go through it, but it's the offsetting revenues for each of the projects that we've just reviewed. For example, line 286 shows us what we are currently receiving from the state and will re, continue to receive from the state in the way of building aid for the work that was done here at the high school back in 2001. Line 287 shows us the remaining payments for building aid, that we will, that we will receive on the Mountain View and Maple Avenue bonds. Two eighty-eight reflects the building aid that we're seeing for the phase-one renovation work that was done at Bartlett. Two ninety shows us the bond proceeds, the thirteen million one, if that comes in during that particular time. Line two ninety-nine, two ninety-one recognizes the capital reserve contribution to the elementary projects. Two ninety-two is the two-and-a-half million dollars worth of bond financing, if the board elects to do that, for the construction of the track and theater renovations here at the high school. And the rest is just an arithmetic calculation of expenses, less revenues indicate what the total appropriation amounts would be to complete the obligations as we go forward. So again, this is the proposed schedule. We'd ask for you folks to be addressing this during your retreat, come up with any recommendations or additional questions that you have, we'll try to address them for you. And what I would like for us to do at this point is to look at May sixteenth as the decision point, so that, uh, administration can then prepare the rest of the CIP documents for submission and presentation to the town in early June.
Questions? Jenny?
Um, in reading this, I noticed a lot of things are pushed out one year, which means there's an awful lot of things coming out in one year. Is that because none of the CIP things went through in the budget this year?
And the past year. For two years now, we've had, other than contractual responsibilities, specifically our bond payments and our payments, uh, for the energy management program, everything else has been pushed out.
So, we're trying to plan, but it's not working out with us being able to plan ahead for that?
Right, like CIP, this plan is becoming almost obsolete because we just keep pushing things out. It doesn't mean anything because everything we put on there has just gotten pushed out one year and next year we push them out another year, so.
And didn't I say that, was it in your education, um, your state education, um, in front of the House that there's a bill requiring schools to have CIP funding, was that in the school board association thing? I just thought it was interesting because we try and do it every year.
Right, to have a plan.
Someone is trying to put a law through that actually requires people to do like this.
Yeah, which we do do every year. I mean, a CIP committee for the town does it every year, but I think we-
The town doesn't say it has to be funded.
And, and that's what happens is because what is happening now is we've put a lot of things off, we're now getting where, there's a lot of things like oil tank replacement and furnace repla, you know, boiler replacement that you can't keep putting off because at some point we're just going to get into a catastrophe where our oil tank's going to leak and now all of a sudden we have to come up with two hundred thousand dollars that we may not have. And so, what's happening now is it's all just building to where we're going to just keep moving out and if you look in one, two years out, there's a lot of stuff in that year, you know?
Again, the fear is, you know, the great example, Stacy, with the oil tanks, um, if you do it now and you capture it before, you have to do soil remediation and everything else.
Yes, an awful lot less.
Then you double the cost.
Right, I mean, look what we had to do here at the high school when it happened. Um, we had to bring in an extra oil, you know, a portable oil tank, which they had to come deliver oil every other day, you know, it just, the cost to clean up the soil, you know, it adds up.
Yeah.
Okay, so you will see that again, you'll see that at the retreat, we'll be talking about some of those bigger projects and really trying to pin down how we want to handle them, where we want to handle them, um, so that we'll be ready to come back to the board meeting, so you'll have lots of opportunities.
Suzanne, I'm going to ask you to correct me if I say anything that's off-base. In terms of what's before you, I think this represents everything that's sort of looking out, um, that's on our plate and ahead of us in terms of projects. The questions then become is, are they timed in the right way, um, and/or what do we want to do relative to the things that are on the plate in terms of scheduling them? And that may mean making decisions to do some of the smaller projects and to get those on sooner, um, and then push things that we have a little bit more flexibility on. Obviously, a twenty-five-year-old roof, a twenty-five-year-old boiler, we have to start thinking about, when are we not going to have a choice about when to budget for that? So, as we go forward into our meeting, I think timing are the things that you want to consider, with the understanding that some of the things that we may have to make a decision and pull the trigger to do sooner will minimize the cost of other projects, um, going ahead because we won't have to do the work.
And we have to realize that we are competing for dollars with a lot of town CIP items that also have been pushed back.
That's right.
Because they haven't gotten very much in CIP the last couple of years. So all of those things, they don't disappear, they have to go somewhere, so they get pushed back a year. And that moves everything else back a year. Or it defeats the purpose of CIP because it makes it impossible to balance expenditures.
Right.
You know, it's, it makes it impossible. The only way CIP works is if you do what you say you're going to do.
Follow them, right. Because otherwise, if you look at 2013, it's pretty stacked with-
Oh, yeah.
-really big stuff we have to do.
And CIP this summer will have the task of not only looking at the things that were requested right along in these years, but the things that got defeated and didn't make it.
Yep.
So, and those things don't, like I said, they don't go away, they just stack up there.
Any other questions, concerns? Just need to know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's right.
That's right. Everybody needs to complete.
I have, yeah, I have the elected officials' benefits summary. You need to complete one, whether you take benefits or not. If you don't take it, there's a little box that says you opt out and don't want benefits. If you take them, there's a little place to check it. If you can do them tonight, right, if not, just get them back. I do have packets for health and dental benefits, if you want information on them and the cost of them. Yes, I think anybody got one, thank you. So if you want a packet, just let me know, um, you can get those back to me at your leisure. Just for anybody who's watching, the school board does get access to benefits, they are at one hundred percent paid for by the board member.
And if you can do them, just hand them up when you're done and we'll collect them out. If you need a hold onto them, that's fine. Discussion of leases. I went to the selectman's meeting on Monday night, um, and discussed the GTV lease, the White Building lease, and the Barnard Park track lease. And, uh, agreed to come back to them with proposals on the Barnard Park lease and on the, um, GTV leases. I'd like to tell you I can remember a lot.
Yep, do it.
Yeah, please.
Um, the Barnard Park lease, um, in 2010, I met with, since 2009, in June, I met with the selectman. We agreed to a two-year extension to that lease. Um, at, we never, the selectman never gave me any paperwork for the extension to the lease, so at the board meeting, um, it's our recommendation that we go forward with a four-year lease, so that it would cover the two years that we never had paperwork on, and two years which will get us to 2014, correct? Is that- Is that, if I remember?
Actually...
I didn't bring the notes.
What I suggested was, because of the projects that are on our plate, and so CIP is a convenient discussion to have had before this, my recommendation to them, and they found this to be acceptable, was that we go out five years from today, which would take us through 2016, and I indicated to the selectmen that we would bring back a proposal that included that term. The only other thing that we asked to capture in the Barnard Park lease was the use of the facilities to have access to water, because it makes life an awful lot easier than having the students schlep barrels of water across the way. And they were amenable to that. So, what we end up with is a five-year term, which hopefully will be adequate for enough for the board to make a decision on the proposal before us on dealing with a track issue, and will allow us to get it in line based upon our collective capital needs. So, that's what we would like to take, that's why I would recommend that we take back to them as a proposal.
Okay.
And GTV?
GTV, I was recommending, we have a, we currently have a lease that expires. It was a two-year lease developed in '09, so it expires at the end of this year. I was recommending a five-year lease with them. It's been a good relationship, I think it's worked well. We've actually have used GTV quite frequently this year in filming some, some shows, and so I think it does work well. I think our relationship has improved. Gary is now sitting on that committee, so hopefully we'll get more feedback and more information. The town was going to talk to GTV to see if they were amenable to a five-year lease, and so as soon as we have that, we'll get back together. And so, perhaps at the next meeting, I'll likely have that actual proposal. I think the board and the town worked really hard to get the lease that we have, and I think we, I reviewed it, and there's nothing in here that I think needs to be changed or amended, so we will likely come back with a similar lease proposal for you to review. That sounds...
The one other item that we talked about was the White Building. We discussed the maintenance that's occurred there, a couple of things that need to be looked at, and once we have the opportunity to engineer looking at some of those things, which includes figuring out a way for the superintendent to get up and look at the cupola.
Right upon the ladder.
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting. I, I'm pretty sure that we didn't get enormous pushback on the notion that that could happen.
Was it directly related to the superintendent doing it?
Absolutely.
That was in my job description.
You have to sign it to an assistance report.
Other duties have to sign.
Yeah.
Geez.
I don't think Brian's afraid of heights. Don't give him a lift.
He would love it, and that wouldn't be the problem.
Yeah. Anything to use a fire truck, right?
Oh, no.
So, so there were some maintenance things that we need to look into and determine what needs to be done as much as doing it, and then we'll circle back.
Can I add? Two years ago, I did have a very brief conversation with an existing selectman about if the cupola was, well, needed significant repairs, could we remove it and simply not have a cupola? And I can say that they came back very quickly with, no, we want the cupola to stay. So, if we choose not to keep the cupola, we do have to ask permission from them.
I was, you know, interesting that you would say that, because just sort of thinking out loud and off the cuff, I actually said the same darn thing that you did, and was met with exactly the same reaction. There's been a significant investment in, in maintaining that, and taking it away is, is not met with any level of interest whatsoever.
Plus, I think the historical society wants it.
You know, it's, it's interesting, that was, yeah, that was, we never really got very far on that discussion, but...
Yeah, I recall that from the lesson.
The sense is, is that to the extent that there might need to be anything done, at least from the ground, it looks as though any work would be superficial, and we'll find out if that's the case, and we'll deal with it going forward.
Great.
And we have a 99-year...
There should be a not-to-exceed price on the cupola. I'm sorry, but I mean, you know...
It is a reparation.
Well, and that, you know, and that was the question that I had, was who's responsible for paying if it's major repairs? Is the SAU responsible or Goffstown?
Ultimately, ultimately, Goffstown. Well, the condition we have is letting the SAU use it from the Goffstown School District is you must maintain it. But technically, the town would come after the school district for it, and we in turn would then have to go after the SAU. Because the SAU, the lease isn't to the Goffstown School District, the police of that building.
Yep. So, that's a big question, as to the responsibility of keeping something historic at the, for the SAU to, for Dunbar and New Boston to maintain something.
I don't know that it's actually on...
It's great rental, I mean, it is, I mean, the SAU, I mean, it's a great rental, right?
But look at the lease, you're responsible.
Yeah, because I was on both sides of this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no doubt that we have to.
Yeah.
We'll check it out and see, I don't know what...
You've got to pick your battles, I don't think that would be one of them.
Okay, parking policy?
Yes.
I've had several conversations with Chief Sullivan around, if you recall, in August, the board made a motion for parking at Glen Lake to be restricted to residents only during the summertime. They are having a public, they are having several public hearings to look at a change in the ordinance regarding that. One of our conversations was, was we thought that it probably needed to be, on the board, from the board's perspective or enforcement, it would better, it would be better to have it in a policy than to have it just as a motion at the board meeting. So, I apologize to HR Committee, but Pat really would like this done before, by the time the ordinance gets passed, so that it's all together, so on June 15th, everybody's in place, everything's in place. So, he has his hearing scheduled. So, what I did was I looked at, we have, we actually have a traffic and parking control policy, that's all, and everything. And so, what I did was add two brief paragraphs to the end, which kind of mimic what the board's discussion was. Basically, that during, during hours that school is in session, including summer, only employees and those with official school district business are permitted to park in designated school parking lots. From June 15th through Labor Day, those wishing to park at Glen Lake School in order to access facilities outside of the school district may do so only if they are residents of the community of Goffstown. This parking restriction will be enforced, take out that "in," will be enforced by town ordinances. This restriction does not supersede any above restriction. So, I wanted to make sure that from June 15th, Goffstown's were still in school, that it doesn't supersede, you can't park there while school's in session. So, I tried to keep it short, brief, but what the board basically approved.
Can I ask a question? And, and this is generally. Is a fair reading of this that if somebody goes and parks at school in order to use the playground facility?
They may do so.
They may do so.
Correct.
But in order to use the playground facility, do you also need to be a resident?
Not necessarily. We've not, never enforced that in any of our schools.
Well, it could, because, because a thoughtful person who was trying to contravene the policy would say, I came here to use the playground, but then saw this beautiful beach across the street, and thought I'd go over and do that too. I mean, I came here to use the playground.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that makes a difference to anybody here at this table or not.
Doing more difficult at Bartlett. Does that playground get used a lot, Glen Lake?
Yeah, it gets used by little kids, yeah.
Yeah, from the neighborhood, they come over.
Yeah. I mean, all of our playgrounds outside of school hours get used.
So, to, to the extent that, that the police department needs to enforce a policy of the district, is this comprehensive enough?
I showed it to Pat, and he was fine with it.
He was?
Yep.
They had common sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just felt that having it in a policy versus just in a motion had more ground to stand on, that it was a little more solid on what the board's intention was.
Makes sense.
So, this is a first read. We'll skip a meeting and then bring it back for a second read.
Any questions?
I just have two really non-public, quick, non-public things, and that's...
Okay. Any other business that may legally come before the board? Seeing none, I need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A, semicolon, 32E. Please, there's a second. Head nod?
Yes.
Thank you. Female's all right, thank you very much.
Your question, that last paragraph, those wishing to park at Glen Lake and want to access facilities outside of the school district, the lakes outside of the school district.
Fine, great.
Playground, isn't it?
I'm not going to get much...